Colleagues, we're back in session and our next committee is the Strategic Planning Committee, and I'll turn to the Chair of that committee, Mr. James Ford. Mr. Ford?
Mr. Ford?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can. Thank you.
Apologies. So I'm James Ford, the Chair of the Strategic Planning Committee, joined by my Vice Chair, Ms. Jill Cammets. And we have before us today for action, the adoption of the quote, "Strategic Plan Action Framework" and the Equity Resolution that's associated with it. If it's all right with you, we'll begin with the resolution. Before I start, I wanted to take a point of personal privilege and thank Dr. Deanna Townsend Smith for her exhausted work with this committee. In truth, a lot of the work of the Strategic Planning Committee and specifically our focus on equity predates my arrival on the Board and certainly has been a tremendous assistance to myself and Ms. Cammets in helping to work to develop this. I recall Fall '18 Planning and Work Session, I believe on the campus of North Carolina Central University. We first began in painting the equity definition, the stage about what that means and working through that process. Also, as you may recall, we had the Racial Equity Institute, whose name is pretty popular so far in today's meeting, as they provided for the State Board a groundwater presentation, familiarizing us with the foundational concepts of systemic racism and how, using data, these patterns, these racialized patterns, could be seen not only in the education institution but in institutions across sector and across the Board. You also may recall in one of our other planning sessions, we also underwent an equity simulation that was presented to us by Aliments Achieves, where we got a taste of what it was like to be a student, sort of caught the crawl and falling through the equity gaps of our education system. And then more recently, you may recall, over the summertime, we were visited by Wake County teacher, Mr. Matt Shelldon, whose course, Teaching Heart History, was presented, and his students were able to provide their perspectives, not only on that course, but also on the need to include more well-rounded and inclusive perspectives while teaching. And then, of course, last month, we were treated to be on the receiving end of the words of luminary Dr. Dudley Flood as he talked about his work over the past 30 to 40 years for what would now be termed equity and his work as well as the work of Dr. Jean Cosby and how his response to our resolution represented a moment where the Board could cast a vision for the rest of the PSUs throughout the state. So that brings us to this point. You all have seen some version of this Equity Resolution. I did want to pause here to thank all of the Board members who have provided feedback, both written, who have given us calls to myself and Ms. Cammets. This draft has gone on through probably four different iterations at this point, but we have been grateful for the diligence with which the Board has taken this document, which is largely symbolic but does hold us to our commitment. There have been multiple great conversations and really teachable moments along the way. And so, in addition to that, I also want to give a shout out to the students who have reached out to us. I have been in contact with the organization or collective called the Fuel Collective, the fostering unity and equity for leadership collective, in their petition for a new vision, one that fosters racial equity and racial justice in education as well as the Wake County Black Student Coalition. And I want to thank our student advisor, Nathan, for putting them in contact with me. So without further ado, we're going to read through the latest draft of our Equity Resolution. And I'm going to ask my colleague and partner, Ms. Cammets, if she would do the honors.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. It is an honor and a pleasure to read this document. "North Carolina State Board of Education: A Resolution to Support Equity and Excellence in North Carolina Public Education." Whereas, the State Board of Education values the over 1.5 million public schoolchildren in its trust as one of the state's most precious resources, girded by North Carolina's Constitution Declaration that the people have a right to the privilege of education, that it is the duty of the Board to guard and maintain that right. And whereas, in addition to guarding, maintaining, and encouraging education, the North Carolina Constitution commands that equal opportunities shall be provided for all students to pursue and fully participate in the free public school system. And whereas, the State Board of Education acknowledges that equity is a necessary and critical component to education that helps ensure the privilege of a sound, basic education for every child. And whereas, in 2019, the State Board of Education adopted equity and a whole child orientation as the guiding principles for the Strategic Plan for North Carolina as essential to ensuring the needs of each and every child are met. Defining educational equity for our state as the belief and practice of ensuring that every student is treated in a fair and just manner, providing the necessary allocation of resources for the success of every student, and eliminating discriminatory barriers to full participation and opportunities for every student. And whereas, and whereas, the State Board of Education is charged with providing a sound, basic education for every student, including determining and maintaining the broad strategic plan for the public school units in our North Carolina. And whereas, the North Carolina Constitution directs the State Board of Education to make all needed rules and regulations to supervise and administer the free public school system, subject to laws enacted by the General Assembly. And whereas, the State Board of Education recognizes that historical and current systems of inequitable and inadequate resource allocation, disproportionate suspensions and expulsions, lack of access to and support for teachers of color, unequal access to educational opportunities and support, implicit and explicit biases, and segregation perpetrate inequity in the outcomes of students. And whereas, research shows that the physical, emotional, and social health of students is inextricably linked to their academic achievement, while barriers to success for many children include student opportunity disparities when aspects of the educational system based on race, family structure, racism, poverty, poor health, unsafe environments, nutrition deficiencies, limited access to services and infrastructure needed to support their long-term health and safety that will ensure their access to a quality public education, resulting in rigorous academic attainment for every student. And whereas, the State Board of Education acknowledges that other state and local agencies, along with parents, educators, and the community, are important partners, each having a significant role in meeting the needs of children by eliminating opportunity and access gaps, each sharing a common goal of supporting the health and academic achievement of every student. And whereas, every student requires a safe and nurturing learning environment to grow, flourish, use their voice, pursue their dreams, and achieve their full potential through pursuing a successful academic path designed to produce graduates who cherish a lifelong interest in learning through an equitable state school system, which contributes to helping students develop the intellectual and moral fortitude to become productive, thoughtful, and empathetic citizens who contribute to human flourishing, impacting world change. And whereas, schools are both a part of and a reflection of the local community. And equity enhances the relationship between educational attainment and social and emotional learning, placing the child's interest in progress at the center of a system designed to support both. Whereas, race is a determinant of equity and equity is the quality of opportunity achieved by unequal and differentiated inputs, and we have an imperative duty to construct educational systems that eradicate racism to support students of all races. And whereas, gender is a determinant of equity and we have an imperative duty to construct educational systems to eradicate gender biases to support students of all genders. And whereas, all students thrive when equity is applied in every aspect of the school environment, including but not limited to admittance or exposure to rigorous coursework through advanced placement courses, funding, disaggregated and transparent data, teacher recruitment and retention, school leadership, class content, instructional time, student support, rural climate, early learning, facilities, and diverse classrooms in schools. And whereas, an equity framework helps to respond to social and health pandemics as well as natural disasters, necessitating that all public school units commit to engaging in equitable practices pursuant to the federally approved NC Equity Plan and State Board of Education Policy and Strategic Plan. Now therefore be it resolved that the State Board of Education embraces equity as a framework to promote student academic success grounded in appropriate supports for student academic, social, and emotional learning and well-being. And resolved that the State Board of Education, its leadership, members, and advisors join every educator, parent, and advocate in North Carolina with a solemn commitment to eliminate every equity barrier and opportunity gap in our great state, such that no North Carolina public school student has to overcome such inequities on his or her own. Resolved that the State Board of Education will review and appropriately revise its policies through an equity lens and commit to work with the Superintendent and the Department of Public Instruction to create and maintain an equity officer to ensure consistency and continuity with this essential guiding principle inside and outside the agency. And resolved that the State Board of Education, through its oversight of the Department of Public Instruction, commits to using its policy and strategy to provide equitable opportunities for every student within the North Carolina system of public education. Resolved that the State Board of Education will provide resources such that students see themselves reflected in the curriculum to support culturally affirming environments in schools. And resolved that the State Board of Education supports districts in changing school names that reasonably are perceived as highly offensive to a significant portion of the local community and supports districts pursuing reasonable, feasible, and strategic opportunities to desegregate, to create intergroup contact with different racial and ethnic populations. And resolved that the State Board of Education expects public school units to align their strategic goals to the broad goals the Board has established for North Carolina, guided by equity to create collaborative school-community relationships to improve students' learning, offering equitable opportunities to meet the constitutional mandate to provide a sound, basic education by providing equal opportunities for all students throughout North Carolina. And resolved that the Board members direct the Secretary to the State Board of Education to enter a signed copy of this resolution into the official minutes of the North Carolina State Board of Education.
Thank you, Ms. Cammets. You can take a moment to grab a breath there. Board members, if anyone has any questions or comments about the resolution, I grant you the time to discuss these.
Mr. Ford, this is Olivia.
Dr. Oxendine.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. I just want to make a few comments and I have a little bit of a preamble. I promise it won't take a year to get it passed and approved. This, you know, I've wrestled with this for several days and I guess my point of greatest wrestling is because as an American Indian person, an educator, and now a policymaker, I understand in the deepest pit of my heart what equality and equity and justice and fairness, what those words mean and how they feel. And I'm not going to go into my life journey at all. I think you all have heard a little bit about it so that you can patch the pieces together and get the full effect of my life journey. So I come to this resolution not quite resolved in my mind that where it's going to take us. I've been here as an educator for a long, long, long time. I would be very disturbed if any one of my hundreds of students in North Carolina and other states, I would be very disturbed if they said or thought that Olivia Oxendine, Mrs. Oxendine back then, was an unfair, unjust teacher who did not respond to my needs and my questions when I went up to her desk looking desperate for information and clarification. I would be very troubled by that. But with that said, I take this resolution very seriously. I think when the State Board of Education resolves to do something in a formal document, that's a big promise that we're making to ourselves and to our public educators and to our citizens and to the world. It's a huge promise. So with that backdrop in mind, if I could just ask a couple of questions and that would be the least I would ask. I want to, first of all, within the body of the resolution, there are terms that I am struggling with. And I think had we had some time and a venue, the right venue, you know, with COVID and what have you, nothing was the right venue, we could have probably wrestled through these terms and come up with a meaning and we could have said, oh, I get it. So I'm concerned about when we resolve to have an equity officer, when we resolve to do that, that means that that's a huge promise we're making to ourselves and to others. So I would want to know, what are the powers of that person? To whom does that person report? What is the relationship between an equity director, officer, and whoever serves in the role of affirmative action within the department? So is there a relationship between those two individuals or two offices? What are the powers vested in this person? And the term equity lens, I would need to know, what are we talking about when we talk about it? Is somebody going to develop that apparatus or that tool or that thing? So all around, within the resolution, the concept of the equity officer, just for me, I have some unanswered, I mean, I have some questions that I would like to have answered. Maybe it's impossible at this late stage. The other concern that I have is gender disparities. And I would wonder if, you know, we've had Title IX around for more than 40 years and it has been somewhat the guardian to make sure there's no discrimination, that boys and girls have the same opportunities in the area of sports and athletics. And also, that's been extended in other venues of public education. So I would wonder, you know, what else are we referring to when we talk about gender disparities? Is this going to be beyond what the Title IX law already has in place? A conversation around that would have helped me. And the other, of course, now this part is in the action framework, but I'll still get to, I want to do that now. There is a statement in the action framework under the subcategory of equity and I'm going to truncate the reading and shoot to, this is bearing in mind that fair is not always equal and equal is not always equitable. Maybe I shouldn't read it all. "The State Board is committed to delivering equitable opportunity to every student in North Carolina, bearing in mind that fair is not always equal and equal is not always equitable. Therefore, educational equity is the belief and practice of ensuring that every student is treated in a fair and just manner. I can buy into that. I believe that with my whole heart and mind in being. But I'm confused about if fair is not always equal and equal is not always equitable, but yet further in the next line, we're saying we believe that students should be treated fair. I need to know then what does fair mean if it does not mean equal and equitable? Okay, that's a point for me that needs real clarity. And then my last point is this. I want to know, did we have on the Resolution Development Committee, I've seen the names, I've probably seen them more than one time and, you know, I will assume full responsibility if I didn't raise this question for this point sooner. But I want to know, did we have American Indian educators serving on the Equity Committee? Did we have also representatives from, because I can't tell. I mean, usually when I think of American Indians, I'm sorry. You know, I can look at the surname and say, yes, I think I know that person or I know the tribal affiliation. And then the other, but did we have, do we have, because I would imagine this work will continue with the committee, do we have rural educators? I noticed that we have our large urban districts and cities on the committee, but I'm wondering, because, oh my goodness, we can talk forever about the inequities in the rural parts of North Carolina. So did we have rural voices on the committee? And I will just, in my silicoy.
Thank you, Dr. Oxendine. So if I have this right, there's the question about equity officers, number one. The phrase "gender biases" germane to Title IX and what would that do to accentuate that? Clarity about this notion of equity and specifically equity lens and equity and fairness? And then the question about rural voices.
Rural and other ethnicities.
And other ethnicities as well, absolutely, okay. So if, and any one of the members of the Strategic Planning can feel free to pop in as you see fit. But regard to the equity officer and the chain of command and the duties, for the purpose of the resolution, we get to that level of granularity. What this is more doing is a commitment to a leader overseeing that work. But certainly, I think as we get into the implementation of this, discussions about who and what that looks like are important. But I don't think that that was necessarily the purpose of this document, was to spell out the chain of command, the hierarchy, the scope of work, job description, et cetera. But rather, a leader whose charge it is to help govern and shepherd that work was rather the commitment of this particular document. With regard to gender biases, obviously, we know from our data that there certainly are disparities in various categories of education. And while I do appreciate, and certainly, we know that we've experienced tremendous gains as a society as a result of Title IX. In many ways, I think it could be compared to the Civil Rights Amendments after Reconstruction in that on paper, it did provide provisions for people to be able to step into those things. However, those things were not fully actualized until much later due to the fact that there are still lingering or were lingering disparities. And so, not until nearly 100 years later, during the Civil Rights Movement, were people able to act on those things. And so, I don't think we are yet free of gender disparities. Our data within our system certainly tell us that. And so, this is, I think, a commitment to eliminating and eradicating those biases for all genders. The equality and fairness. Justice and fairness, I think, you know, there's been much deliberation. I don't care who you talk to when discussing educational equity. And I'll borrow, I think I've said this before, but I'll borrow the phrase of Charlotte educator and mentor, Arthur Griffin, former Board Chair at CMS, who says, "If you treat unequally positioned people equally, what you'll get in the end are unequals." And so, it's recognizing that merely to treat everyone equal doesn't recognize the differential positioning, the different needs. And so, the spirit of fairness means that it won't always be equal in its treatment. In the classroom level, we could refer to this as differentiation. One could teach to the middle. However, we know that you're going to be missing students who are at the higher end, at the lower end. And so, equity could be referred to as, with Dr. King called, genuine equality, which takes into account the different positionings and the different needs of folks. And that is inspired by justice and that is inspired by fairness. There were rural voices on the committee. As you know, Matthew Bristow Smith, our former Principal of the Year, and also Tabari Wallace was included on that committee as well. Brian Morris was included on that committee. And the names that you have listed were additional voices that we reached out to to provide feedback for the Strategic Plan Action Framework. So those were in addition to the folks who actually serve on the committee. I do not know if anyone of American Indian descent was included. I do know that we initially had reached out and requested to make Stacy a part of that process. I just don't know what became of that. But nevertheless, there was a multiracial and a urban, suburban, rural mix on both the committee and some of the folks who provided feedback to the action framework. So I'll pause there if anyone else would like to offer any insights with regard to Dr. Oxendine's questions.
Mr. Ford, Matt Bristow Smith. So, Mr. Ford, with regards to the equity officer issue, I see so many, in my one-year stint on the Board so far as an advisor, I see so many different applications for which an equity officer could have a significant impact upon our work. And just kind of brainstorming off of the top of my head, you know, this year, we have priority points that were added to our Innovation Progress Grant process so that we could be more attuned to equity when it comes to how we distribute those IPG grants. When I think about the EPP assessment model and domain four of that and the importance of that diversity component, I see an equity officer as being somebody who would have a really powerful voice in making sure that the model works but also implementation works. When I think about closing subgroups in our data, I think that that is clearly something where an equity officer would want to have his or her voice involved in that piece. When I think about the work of My Future NC over the next 10 years, seems to me that making sure that we're moving the state forward in an equitable manner, that an equity officer would want to have an important role in that work. FAFSA completion, completing of that very important FAFSA form and making sure that as we reach that 80% goal for our state, that we're moving all subgroups forward in reaching that. And just so many, many other areas, I have such a growing appreciation for the fact that if you are in education today, we are all in the role of promoting equity through our work. And an equity officer would help to provide the glue to pull all that together. So I'm really excited that that is in our resolution and in the framework and that so many applications to that, even though we haven't articulated the specific job duties and responsibilities of that role. With that, I just wanted to pause and just contribute my full support for that particular position and the just innumerable opportunities for that person to move us forward.
Mr. Ford?
Absolutely. Proceed.
Just to add to what Mr. Bristow Smith just said, I also think we can look to the precedent where Dr. Emery has now taken over guiding us through our Leandro Plan. And I would see someone who was running an equity office as being a full partner to coordinate both of those, both the Equity Resolution and our Strategic Plan and the Leandro Plan with her.
With her.
Thank you for that, Ms. Camnitz, and for you as well, Mr. Bristol Smith. Are there any other comments or questions, uh, and Dr. Oxendine, I hope that that, uh, answered some of your, some of your queries?
Uh, I do have just a kind of a closing comment, if I may. I appreciate the, uh, responses to, uh, uh, the elaboration to the points that I've raised. I would just wrap it up by saying that I, I would imagine that we would have the expectation of these program managers and directors to have that same focused, intentional look at whatever they are reviewing, developing, assessing, or implementing. So I, I still am not quite, and, and I know a document, a resolution isn't to go to the fine tuning, tuning points. Nevertheless, those are my concerns that I have because I just need some sense of, uh, some better sense of, um, that, that we have been thinking that collectively, that we are on the same page in terms of our concept of what these individuals, uh, will do. I'll go back with my, truly my last point. Uh, it isn't difficult at all to, to, um, add voices to the work of this Equity Initiative. When I talk about, I'm talking about the American Indian Voice, have a sitting Stacy, we have a liaison who works with Stacy in our building, Dr. Silver. It is, it, it would not, if we are truly committed to the concept, and I know that I, we, I have no reason to doubt that, um, to Equity, then we're going to be very intentional and very expansive of this group. And I'm, uh, I really do have a double line under our rural voices. And thank you, Mr. Ford, and thank you for your hard work. And I did, I enjoyed working with, with Doc, with Ms. Camnitz, Indiana, on, um, tweaking a little bit of the framework.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Dr. Oxendine. Uh, yes, is, uh, is that Mr. Keenan?
Yes, yes, if I may, I'd like to give a few comments about the resolution. Uh, number one, I, I say that it was well done, a lot of work went into it. Um, I think it gets to the heart of what we're all about. And throughout this resolution, you can notice the word "every student." That's what I like about the way it was composed. We're not, you're not talking about one particular, uh, race or the, uh, one particular class, but you said "every student." Throughout the words here, "every," "every student." And that is why as a board, we strongly support for all students. And, uh, you know, uh, the Equity issue is a very, uh, relevant issue now more than ever. It just seemed to be on TV, on the radio, in life in general. And that's a good thing. You know, there's a slogan a lot of people use that you hear over and over is, "If not now, then when?" And that's where I, I'm really going to talk a few minutes about, "If not now, when?" And I think the when is now. And, and, and nothing in this resolution, in my opinion, differs from what we have always talked about. But you, we're now putting in a more concise understanding of what we're all about. Um, I think, uh, sometimes folks think of Equity dealing with particular, uh, dealing with racial only. But Equity is not just a race issue, sometimes it's social economics. And that's when we talk about every student, uh, in Equity, uh, some of them are, uh, don't achieve because, not because of the color necessarily, but because of the economic status they're in. And again, I think this resolution covers all of that. I think the, um, Equity Officer is important because we know as human beings that sometimes unless you keep something on the out front, it's going to just disappear. I've been on State Board since 2010 and Equity has come up. Good Board members, no, nothing about that. But I think sometime Equity got lost in other, uh, for, for one reason or another. Uh, but my point was is that you may talk about one meeting, one year, and then don't hear about it again till another year, another two years. And I think this year will eliminate that particular situation. I think Officer, Equity Officer will definitely focus on keeping it out front. Because if you don't keep it out front, it has a tendency to just lay there and just subside. And it's one issue that we cannot allow to just lay to the side and die away. And I think the time is now. I think that we have the board that to make it, uh, uh, again, the Equity the way it should be and will be. And a lot of times, again, folks may not understand that term Equity because, like you said, Equity doesn't always mean equal. And I'm a proud of the board that we have today. I'm proud of, uh, a lot of, uh, conversations we had in the past. This is another form of, 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 of action. You know, talk, talk, talk is good, but action is better. I remember a long time ago, uh, and I'm not going to finish up, is that, um, a guy would call himself a preacher and then, and they, and then, and, and it came up to another guy and the guy basically told him, "I'd rather see a sermon than hear one." So that's what I'm saying here. Let's show the folks that we believe in Equity, not just on the paper. Don't talk about it, but let's show them. And, and, and I, again, applaud all of you who put it together. And I'm very proud to stand with you on that, Ms. Ford and others. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Keenan, for keeping us focused on, uh, action for your comments. Uh, Board members, any questions or comments as well with regard to the Equity Resolution?
Mr. Ford?
I'm sorry, uh, but her two voices, not sure.
I will, I, I'll wait, this is, uh, uh, Jackson, I, I'll wait and I'll allow her to go first.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Mr. Ford, this is Maureen Stover.
Miss Stover, please.
Thank you, Mr. Ford and Ms. Camnitz, for the opportunity to address the Board. Let me start by saying that I'm thrilled that our State Board is proactively working toward the goal of removing the opportunity gap for every student in North Carolina by 2025. And I agree with Mr. Keenan that now is the time. The Strategic Plan and Equity Resolution provide us with the opportunity to lay the groundwork that will benefit the kids we have in our schools today and future generations of North Carolinians. In my opinion, it is our duty and our obligation to structure education so that we get to the point where race, gender, socioeconomic status, sexual preference, and all the other factors that we use to place our kids into subgroups can no longer be used to predict a student's success in school and in life. And not because those subgroups are no longer relevant to our kids' identity, but because the subgroups no longer determine the quality of education that they get. The majority of my students have been kids of color who come from low wealth communities. And I have seen firsthand how devastating inequities can be to my kids and how barriers to education have affected their opportunities for success. My dedication to these kids and to all 1.5 million students enrolled in North Carolina's public schools drives me to stand up and to engage in this conversation. Our students are our state's most valuable treasure. And we have an obligation and a responsibility to provide our kids with an equitable education that prepares each of them to be career and college ready when they exit our pre-K-12 system. To reach our goal of removing opportunity gaps by 2025, we need to proactively identify the barriers to education that develop, and develop actionable solutions that ensure equitable education for all of our students. The proposed Equity Resolution and Strategic Plan provide the framework for this work to begin. The work will not be easy, but the things that are most important and worthwhile are rarely easy. We must acknowledge that barriers to education and to a basic and sound education do exist in our public schools, especially for our students and historically marginalized populations. And we must begin the work to remove these barriers so we can provide an equitable education to every single child in North Carolina. We must foster school-wide environments to support culturally responsive instruction. And we must provide clear pathways for teachers of color to enter our classrooms. As an anti-racist teacher, I see this as the most important obligation that we have to our kids. We have an opportunity to begin, to begin fixing this problem. We have an opportunity to be a national leader in our approach to addressing inequities in education. We have an opportunity to be on the right side of history. Providing an equitable education for every student in North Carolina will be one of the most important and the most impactful actions we can take to improve public education. And we owe it to our kids to remove barriers so they can reach their ultimate potential. Thank you for allowing me to share my thoughts.
Just, as, uh, they could get a chance to share words on that and, uh, thank you for having us on our Board for, uh, as about two years, for the much minimal conversations. Uh, to our Superintendent of the Year and then to Mrs. White.
Mr. Ford, thank you for the opportunity and to the Board. I, I come late to this party, but I can recognize and see the amount of work that has gone into, uh, this resolution and this framework. And I, I will start my comments with a truism, uh, that comes from my, uh, family as we've grown up. My father would say to me often, "Until you decide what's important, everything is important." And so I want to thank you for, uh, doing a few things, for providing clarity around the issue of Equity and its importance, for being courageous enough to step forward because it cannot be easy in, in our current climate to stand up and sometimes just say what you believe is right. And as a Board, to do that at this time, I believe, takes, takes a lot of courage. And then as I read through the document, I was struck by the, uh, as Mr. Keenan just said, the conviction, uh, to ensuring that we touch all children, that everyone was included in this resolution, which tells me that, um, this, this body has made the decision to put a stake in the ground and to set the stage to ensure pure equity. And if, if equity is a hard term to digest, then I use the term constantly to replace equity with the word grace. And grace for me means fairness. Grace for me means giving you the opportunity, uh, to realize your dreams in the way, uh, and helping you realize your hopes and dreams, um, in the best way possible, uh, differentiating it for you. And so I would say to you, thank you to this body for being courageous. Thank you for providing clarity and thank you for your conviction on this issue. The time is now. And I would say to you, uh, right now, we have, uh, a, a very, uh, important time in our history to stand up and say that this is important and generations will thank us for it later. Thank you for, for the opportunity to speak on this. I support the resolution and would hope that it would be something that this body would pass.
Thank you for your commentary, uh, Dr. Jackson. Uh, Ms. White?
Thank you, Mr. Ford. I want to begin by saying thank you to, um, particularly Ms. Camnitz and Mr. Ford and Dr. Townsend Smith, who have invested hours upon hours on this document. Um, I want to preclude my statements in that I agree with 90% of what has been presented here. I do have a couple of pauses, um, that I wish in, in, in fairness, um, to use that word, that we had just a bit more time before we take action to tweak a couple of these areas. I'm afraid that today we're going to be pressed to take a vote where I wish we had consensus from every Board member. But I am projecting that there's going to, um, not be that unanimity, um, around what's currently on paper. Um, and I wish we had just a little bit more time to, um, have complete agreement on the direction that we must go, that we should go, that we're called to, um, move forward. And, um, as I shared with Dr. Deanna Townsend Smith, um, over lunch, that, um, we as leaders are called to make a difference during the time that we lead. And now is that time. And so while I don't feel like we will be able to, um, eradicate the unfairness of years and years of activities that perhaps, um, have caused, um, the largest educational gap our nation faces, I do believe that we can take small steps. I just wish that this document, um, um, more, better, better reflected some of my own thoughts. One, um, in the seventh whereas, um, I personally feel like that this, whereas the NC State Board of Education recognizes that historical and on, uh, and current, um, systems of inequitable inadequate resources, calls out this particular Board as it operates today. And while I recognize, um, decisions that have been made in the past, I personally feel like in the four years that I've had tenure on this Board that I have worked tirelessly to make sure that underserved communities in the state of North Carolina and underserved student populations have had as much access as I personally could give. And as this Board has worked together to personally give. So I can't agree with, um, that portion of the statement, um, because I feel like we are currently working towards, um, moving all students towards success. In the second part of that statement where it says, "Lack of access and support for teachers of color." Um, in our work in the ESMP Committee under the leadership of Dr. Olivia Oxendine, um, we learned that we really can't force any person to choose teaching as a profession, regardless of color, um, regardless of gender, regardless of, um, economic background. We can't choose folks to teach. And so while I wish that we had it under our control as the North Carolina Board of Education to provide more access for students, um, I mean, for teachers to choose to go into teaching, I don't feel like it's under our control, um, to make sure that, um, anyone, particularly people of color, choose that profession. We need, um, more diversity in our teaching force, that is an understatement. Um, in another whereas, um, particularly the one related to gender, it's been no secret during my tenure on the Board that I bring a biblical worldview, um, to the table. And under that worldview, I believe that God created men and women. And when you use gender as an opportunity, um, to discuss inequity, it opens the door towards, um, the current, um, discussion of gender identity crisis. And I wish we were using different wording to better articulate the fact that we need, um, more, um, equitable practices, practices for boys, um, who, and, who, um, and, and for girls particularly with access to, um, science, technology, engineering, and math. Um, we certainly need more male educators, but that word, gender, opens a Pandora's box for me. And I would like to see that reworded. Um, and then finally, um, in a previous iteration, um, there were, um, words in the document that I felt like were more divisive rather than inclusive. And I echo the sentiments of Dr. Oxendine, um, regarding a disconnect in some of the wording, um, used, um, that, that I believe is misunderstood by, um, smaller rural communities across North Carolina. I'll give an example that a group of pastors in my hometown have gathered because their hearts have been so burdened, um, by the, um, the recent racial outcry across our nation. And they decided to come together to discuss many of these issues. Um, and because of that, um, I asked them about their dialogue. And none of them were using many of the words that are catchphrases in the discussion that we hear today because they come from a godly perspective. And, um, as previously, um, mentioned by the, um, Mr. Jackson, I believe, that the word of grace and kindness and love and, um, belief that we should treat folks with, um, the grace and love that our Lord gives us. And so, um, with that, I believe that there's a disconnect between what's being discussed in larger, um, platforms and what's really being discussed in small-town North Carolina. So, um, those are the areas that, um, I wish that we had time, um, to tweak a little further so that we could have consensus before, um, we vote. Thank you, Mr. Ford.
No, thank you, Ms. White. Uh, eh, you know, profound and genuine respect and admiration for you and your comments. And, uh, and, you know, uh, something I believe, uh, that all of us feel is that ultimately we have to make sure that however we, you know, take a position that we, uh, feel firm about, that it's one that we can live with, the one that comports with our values. Uh, and so, uh, with regard to the process, I will say that this is, uh, the third time that this resolution has come before the Board. And so, um, I, I, I would hope, and if it's not the case, uh, that it is unanimous, uh, that, you know, it's not preferable nevertheless, but, uh, there is, I, I do think a sense of urgency, a palpable sense of urgency. Uh, and so I do want to thank you, uh, for, for your transparency and your honesty in this moment. Vice Chair Duncan?
Mr. Ford?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Ford. Um, I'd like to make the observation that it has been the highest of privileges to serve on this Board. And I say that, uh, not because, uh, the importance of the Board, uh, in state's education, because it's supremely important and the work is incredibly important and deep. But it's, it's also really a privilege to serve with the members of this Board. Uh, this is the highest quality Board I can imagine being on. Uh, there's a distinct, a unique set of skills brought by every member of the Board that combines to make it a very thoughtful and knowledgeable body. And so I say with the deepest sincerity, it is a great privilege to serve here. I do not know how the vote on the resolution. I do not know how the vote on the resolution will come out. But what I do know is that every member of this board, regardless of what the vote is on the resolution, fully supports the notions within the resolution that we want the absolute best, however it can be delivered, for every child in North Carolina, regardless of race, ethnicity, gender or circumstances, that the people on this board care deeply for it. And you can see that and hear it and feel it in the emotions that are expressed as we talk about every issue that comes before the board and certainly this issue. So as we move forward, whatever a vote may be, whether unanimous or divided, whether it passes or not, I feel a strong sense of unity that we will in fact be moving forward with a strong sense of the already passed vision of the board for equity for all students in our state as the top policy of the board and the strategic plan that's already been passed. And I'm grateful to be around people on this board who feel that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. I, I hear a voice, so I can't tell who it is. Is this a?
Wendell Hall.
Mr. Hall, please proceed.
Thank you, sir. I will be brief. The document to me says of expectations. It's what we expect for all of our children within this state, the 1.6 million young men and ladies. And we want the best for all. I said for, you know, it's tough. It's tough when you have to stand on this word equity, but it is what it is. My, my board members mentioned the fact about if we're not nabbed and put in, but if not us, then who? Where will we turn? I fully support the document and I would hope that we will move forward with, because it says that words are one thing, but hopefully the words will put something in the hearts of mankind. I listened to this warning to the foregrounds that the high performing charter studies were implemented along the equity line. And that for me is what it's all about. It's promoting the word and getting the word out and the board standing that this is what we stand for. I hope that we will approve this document tomorrow, I think, but tomorrow and move forward. And thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm probably one of the oldest reps in the ball, but I can tell you it is time for this document to become real to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Board members, I realize that the hour is long in this discussion, you know, with respect to the diverse takes and opinions and notions. It's important, but nevertheless, we have an agenda to work through. So I would ask that you all have had an opportunity to look at the action framework in addition to this resolution. Unless there are any other comments associated with the action framework, and if there are, please feel free to volunteer. I will yield back to the chair. I will open it up very briefly and if there aren't any comments, I yield back to the chair.
Mr. Ford?
Remaining. Mr. Buck?
Mr. Ford, thank you, sir. I, I wanted to make a comment when, when we got to the framework because I believe the resolution in many ways is not complete without the framework with it. It gives us the ways in which we'll hold ourselves accountable for living into the spirit of the resolution. And so I wanted to voice my support for both of these. I wanted to voice my appreciation for what you and Ms. Camnitz and the committee have done to put, to put together multiple versions of this based on input. And I appreciate that commitment to bring as many of the board members' concerns and priorities into it. I, I also believe that both of these documents breathe real life and spirit into the work we've done to live up to our constitutional duty. I see these as a part of a larger package together with the plan that was just presented to the judge. And I think taken together, they show the seriousness of this board and the commitment of this board. And I share the, the spirit I heard earlier that, that we, we appreciate that all board members have same goals in mind. But I feel strongly that our, our plan to the court, this framework and this resolution speak to the values and commitment this board makes to our constitutional duty. And I'm proud to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, before I close out, to my vice chair, I, I just wanted to offer you the opportunity if you had any, and then we may have to, you know, close out until we can proceed with the rest of our agenda. But Ms. Camnitz, did you have anything?
To be honest, I have several points that I wanted to be sure got made and they have been. So I think I would, I took some time last night to listen again to Dr. Flood and his words to us in August. And I just, it struck me, he said, I'll, I'll end with this. He said, "The resolution is in and of itself a generator of enthusiasm and a belief in the fact that this is worth doing. That this Board of Education is considering endorsing such a resolution drives the thinking in a different direction." And I think we're ready to drive the thinking in a different direction.
Very well said and punctuated. Unless there are any more comments, Mr. Chair, I will yield my time and hand it back over to you. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Yeah, we've got an agenda, but this is such an important matter. I want to make sure that every member or advisor who wants to speak has an opportunity. So I'll open the floor again if anyone else has, would like to offer perspective or thoughts on, on these.
Mr. Chair?
Open the floor.
Mr. Chair, it's Matt.
Proceed, proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. I have always appreciated that working towards equity is a process and that it's not an event. It's not a one-time action that the board or any other entity can take. And just as we have framed our strategic plan as a working document, this equity resolution and framework for action will no doubt evolve over time. I've been so impressed by the heart of this board and those leaders within the agency with whom I've had the pleasure to work. We've been working on this resolution for many months now, many months. And I have great confidence that the Strategic Planning Committee will continue to create an evolving equity resolution and framework that hopefully catches up with our work rather than vice versa. I have no question about the commitment of this board to equity. But given the many iterations of this resolution that we have under our belt and likely the many continued iterations ahead of us, I'd like the board to consider that we don't hold perfection as our goal. That's not a standard that we hold to almost any other document, but rather that this document will serve as a compass that moves us and our work forward united and that will continue to evolve as we approach greater implementation of our equity framework. Thank you.
Thank you for your advisement, Mr. Bristol Smith. And, and as stated, with the permission of the, the board chair, are there any other board members who would like to speak before we close out?
Mr. Ford, this is Todd Chastain.
Mr. Chastain, please proceed.
Thank you. First, first I want to thank Mr. Ford, Ms. Camnitz for listening to me and several conversations about some of the issues related to, to the resolution. And it's been a great conversation. I've learned a lot. I did most of the talking, so they did most of the listening. And I want to thank both of you for that. I appreciate James, your, your passion and, and all your energy. And so I just want to start with that. But one, one of the things I want to mention is when we talk about a term like equity, we all totally support equity is a good concept, fairness is a great concept, grace is a awesome concept, equality, all those things. These are things that we are all like 100% behind. And most of North Carolina is behind all these types of concepts. One of the challenges I wrestle with, because I, I work in a policy area and have to deal with cultural ideas and go deep into ideas and understand where it takes you and where they take you in 10, 20, 30 years. And do they actually help? Because I always look at what actually helps. So when I ask the question, what is equity? Well, equity means something different to each one of us. And that's one of the challenges that, that I have in looking at a particular, you know, some particular parts of the resolution. You know, we made some good, I think, positive adjustments in the resolution in our edits. I appreciate all the work Deanna's put in also on this. But you know, when we look, look at what equity actually means, it can mean a lot of things to a lot of different people. For example, if we have an equity officer, equity czar who has limitless discretion, power to decide who's being treated unfair, what ideas are unfair, what ideas are being restricted, what ideas are being silenced, chilled. If you, if you put that in one person, that's a lot of power because this is a pretty broad sweeping term, equity. And so that one person may not look at equity like everybody in this room. If we took all 13 voting board members, we probably have a lot of agreement on what equity should be and where we want to address greater emphasis in curricula, greater emphasis in funding, making sure this, this district has the right funding to, to address these issues. I think those kind of things we can agree on a lot. There's, there's other issues where equity tends to morph across the country and now there's lawsuits going on. And because equity can mean so much. And that's where I struggle with the, the concept of an equity officer because they could have, they would have like incredible discretion and power to, to be the fairness police and tell these, pick winners and losers and those kind of things. And that's not to say you could pick an equity officer who would just do an amazing job, but you could also pick one that could take things in a direction that really was against the values of half the state. You know, maybe certain values would be silenced and restricted and chilled and others would be openly pursued with zeal to promote. And that's happened in parts of the country on issues that a lot of us don't agree with. And there's, you know, I've, I've shared some articles of lawsuits that are going on when that does happen. So that, that's a big concern mine. I know last year we decided there would be a guiding principle of equity and that could run through every division of DPI. It would run through every employee of DPI and those kind of things. So it's, it's, there, there is an equity lens going on already. If you, if you took a list of the 50 areas where we have been working on making equitable decisions in funding and curricula and different things over the last decade, your list could, would get pretty long. So I don't think this issue has been like, it's not like we're going from zero to 60 here. These things have been addressed, they've been pursued and they're going to continue to be pursued. But you know, some of the, I, I shared with the board, one, one of the, you know, academic concerns, something that's been really burning in the academy for, for three or four decades. And the academy, of course, has good ideas that come out of it and they have other ideas that come out of it that aren't so good. And so some of the, some of those concepts, you know, we may or may not agree on, but those are, those are things that for me won't really bring help and won't make the difference that we need to make. But if, if there is, I, I mean, I pointed out some things and I'll, you know, point out some, some more. But I just want you to know and I want the committee to know and the board to know, you know, I'm all about helping the most vulnerable people in our state. That's what I do in my work around the world. We go to the most desperate places on the planet and help the people in the most desperate need on the planet. And just, just to show God's love, that's what we do, that's our heart, that's our passion. But at the same time, I do have trouble with ideas that morph and are, are used improperly. And how to come to a balance on that, I'm still struggling with. But I just wanted to share that and thank you again for listening because I could talk for days on all these things and you, you had to listen to me way too much already. So I'll finish and thank you again.
Mr. Chastain, let me say thank you and return the praise right to you. I greatly respect your belief and your conviction. And you don't have to apologize for talking too much. This, this was the most I had ever heard from you. So it was, it was good just to get a chance to have a prolonged conversation with you. So grateful for your input.
Yes, I, I enjoyed our conversation so much that I said, man, I, I just thank so much of James and like him so much, I want to agree with some of the ideas that I don't, don't agree with. And so like I had to wrestle with that all day, like, oh. But anyway, thank you, thank you again. And just wanted to share those thoughts.
Absolutely, absolutely. Any other comments or concerns from board members? Hearing none. We'll turn the floor back over to you, Chairman Davis.
Well, thank you, Mr. Ford and Ms. Camnitz and for your leadership on this. And most of all, I just want to commend all my colleagues and our advisors. You know, at a time when we're incredibly polarized and divisive, this issue could be among the most divisive. But what I've seen in our conversations, and it was, it bore out in this conversation, is that we have deeply held beliefs that are the product of all of our different life experiences and that we all share concerns for the future. And yet it's our differences that make us the strongest. And I have grown in respect for every one of my colleagues, particularly that have points of view different than my own on this topic. And my respect and admiration has only grown as we've wrestled with this challenging issue. And so while some may believe that civil discourse doesn't exist, it sure does exist with this group. And I'm grateful that we can have these difficult discussions. I'm grateful that we can disagree and still find a path forward to serve the students of North Carolina. So thank you. We'll now move to the last committee of the day, which is the Healthy Responsible Students Committee. How appropriate after that conversation. And I'll turn to the chair of that committee, Mr. Reginald Keenan. Mr. Keenan?
Active, activate, update, and good information falls right in with our speech plan. And who's coming forth, I can't recall exactly who's going to come forth with that. Deanna?
What was your question, Mr. Keenan? I'm sorry.
Who's going to be presenting right then?
So we'll start with Dr. Matt Hoskins. He will lead us off today. Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Keenan. Thank you, Deanna. Good afternoon, Chairman Davis, state board members, stakeholders. As always, we are incredibly grateful to have your time and this opportunity to come to the board and share with you the progress that has been made. As, it's hard to believe as we move now into the third year of a five-year grant that is called Project Aware in North Carolina, we refer to it as Project Activate. We are also really happy right now to share this work in the spirity, in the spirit of an equity lens because we are part of those who have the great privilege as well as the responsibility. because we are part of those who have the great privilege as well as the responsibility to operationalizing what that lens looks like at the local level and how it plays out. We've heard previously in this meeting that people who are unequally positioned are treated equally, the result is inherently unequal. And this is because some individuals, because of different positioning, are going to require different supports. And when we view equity within the work that we're getting ready to talk about, we believe that this project does provide students who are positioned equally with the supports that they need because of where they're positioned, and also to supports that because of where they're positioned, they have disproportionate access. We also know that this work promotes justice. This work is attempting to impact the systems that result in our students being positioned differently. Justice truly occurs when the barriers are removed and individuals are positioned equally. And back to what Dr. Flood said at the last meeting, all schools belong to all the people, and this pursuit of justice is a role that, based on our state constitution, is one that we're charged for. So I'm going to be briefing my comments and what my colleagues tell you about the work that they're doing. But what we have learned is an incredible amount in the last two, three years. We've learned that we can have goals and aspirations as grant writers at the state level, but particularly when it comes to what is a quite complex process of providing mental health services to students in schools. The folks that we've worked with at the local level, the public school units, have really been the beacon in learning about how to scale and sustain comprehensive culture that supports per ton. At our last state board meeting, we had the great opportunity to hear from Cleveland County, and this afternoon be able to hear from Rockingham County and hear their story as well as some of their preliminary results. You'll also see that in the presentation of attachments, we consider very carefully how we can learn from this project to scale the work across the state. And over the course of that time, the grant has received national recognition in its potential for scalability and sustainability. As you'll hear later on, the work is featured in the Association of Maternal and Public Programs Innovation Station as a promising practice. It's been highlighted in the Rural Health Information Hub, and discussion of grant activities and leadership also were recently featured in the North Carolina Medical Journal. And all that's to say is that we have momentum, and we have good ideas scaling because of the great work of the folks that you're getting ready to hear from, that are getting ready to present. And we believe that the provision of mental health services within the context of schools is really important. And it's not just a belief, we know this because the data are compelling. Up to one in five students have experienced some sort of identifiable health issue in North Carolina, yet we know that access to mental health supports is oftentimes sparse, and it's also inequitable. And these data are really what interest us to apply for this grant, which is administered through the National Institute of Health, specifically the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Agency. And the first goal of that grant, as indicated by SAMSA, is to provide culturally competent and developmentally appropriate mental health supports in schools and communities with a particular focus on those communities that historically had disproportionate access to such services. In addition to that, in the time that we find ourselves in currently, we know that there are likely factors that our parents and families are experiencing right now that have the potential to exacerbate mental health issues. And I think what you're going to hear this afternoon is that with careful planning, with preparation, with the resources that they need, public school can be nimble in their ability to respond to crisis and to continually, in the place we find ourselves in now, meet the mental health needs of students. And to very briefly provide a summary of what you're going to hear this afternoon, the major takeaway of what we've learned is that as the state, as we provide resources and opportunities, we're going to talk about as the infrastructure to do the work, when the public school units take that support, they carefully select and implement practices that have an evidence base, that have a known positive benefit to students. But just as important to that, that are carefully aligned to the context of the community resources, as well as the values of the community, and that then when the stakeholders begin to perceive the benefits of that program, those are the variables that really drive scalability and sustainability. And so what you're going to hear next from our presenters when these things are in place, those are the outputs that happen. With that, I'm going to turn it over to my tremendous colleagues. That's going to begin with Dr. Lauren Hall.
Thank you, Dr. Hoskins. And good afternoon to members of the board. And Dr. Townsend Smith, thank you for driving here. If you want to show that slide of the state, I think that would be a great place for us to start, which is to give everyone a sense of where Project Aware is, where we're doing the work. And we have three pilot districts. You heard last month from Cleveland County, you'll hear today from Rockingham County, and then our third district who's working with us with Project Aware is Beaufort County Schools. And when we were with you, I guess it was last spring, spring of 2019, we walked through the selection criteria that was used to, for these three sites. And just to review very briefly, in terms of general capacity, these three districts were fairly, very strong in their MTSS implementation at the time that we wrote the grant. They were also pilot districts in using a district-wide school mental health assessment, and were willing to share that data with us. And they also, in terms of geography, the spread in terms of geography was important, and their size, knowing that 90 of our 115 traditional LEAs have less than 15,000 students. And finally, the epidemiological evidence of need was, was very clear and high from the data that these three districts shared with us. And so that's how we, how we started with these three districts. Next slide. We just want to introduce you to the main players, both at the Department of Public Instruction. Heidi Austin is our State Project Aware Director. Renee Boyd leads the work in Beaufort County. Terry Putnam, you heard from last month, from Cleveland County, and you'll hear from Dr. Stephanie Ellis today. And then they have supporting staff on the next slide, who are serving in data evaluator and coaching roles. And so you can see those three folks there. The other position that we're still awaiting is an assignment of a halftime co-director position from the Division of Mental Health at the Department of Health and Human Services. And we're hopeful that person will be named very soon. So we can move on to the timeline? Thanks so much. And I do just want to point out, there is preceding that 2018 start of the project. In the spring of 2017, 2017, the seat board passed the School Mental Health Policy, S H L T 003. That was spring of 2017. And it was because, because North Carolina had a state school mental health policy, that was certainly one of the factors that we are clear, informed our being funded. When, after we submitted the proposal to the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration in 2018, we were, we were awarded that grant in the fall and began the hiring process that fall. And each year in February, we have to write a continuation grant for the coming year, which we did, and you'll see was awarded for the year two, which we're now in. If you'll remember, in May of last year, you passed the allotment policy for PRC 102, which is allowing us to allot funds to our three districts in last July. By last summer, we had Dr. Austin, as well as the three local directors in place. And really, if we could go back to that timeline, thank you. We also named an external evaluator on law for the project last summer. The other thing I want to mention is that soon after the grant was awarded in 2018, in June of 2018, the General Assembly, through the ratification of House Bill 986, had the state board redact, repeal its school mental health policy. And that's just an important thing for us to kind of keep in mind in this timeline. And so as we catch up to 2020, we, we were awarded a pretty significant carryover. We've been notified that we will be funded for year three. I think it's important for, especially as we hear from Dr. Ellis in just a minute, to be aware of, as the pandemic started, what we were seeing with our three sites in terms of their ability to respond to the crisis. And so I would just tune your ears to listen for that as part of her story. And so here we are in year three. I do want to mention that in early June, the General Assembly came back to the idea of a school mental health policy, and through Senate Bill 476, has asked the state board to implement, implement a new school mental health policy. And you have, as part of your materials, a draft to consider for that. The adoption for that is, the legislation states December 1st. And I, and I just, I can't emphasize enough how the work of these three districts and what we learned from them, in addition to a very diverse group of stakeholders, including some of the board members, were part of that conversation. That the draft you have there, it is deeply informed by what you're going to hear from Stephanie and what you heard last month from Terry. So in my wrap-up, I do want to just briefly summarize for you on the next slide, as a reminder what the goals of the project are. These were written into the original grant, and the first two are really about student outcomes, that through our multi-tier system of support, in those first layers of universal health promotion and prevention activities, we would see improved behavioral and psychological indices of school engagement and decreased school disciplinary events for all students. And then in receiving more supplemental and intensive supports, we would also see a reduction in dropout, the attempted rate of suicide and substance abuse for those students who we have identified are at risk. And we are anticipating seeing the evidence of the impact of our work on those indices in years three, four, and five, for sure. It is in the goals three and four around building those community partnerships and equipping, building capacity at the local level through training, that our first two years have really focused. And I think you'll see that is, is where the legislation has asked DPI to focus its work as well, those goals three and four. And the draft policy also, you'll see reflects that work. And so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Ellis, and, so that you can hear what's really happening on the ground. Thank you.
Good evening, State Board of Education. I'm honored to be here with you today, and just want to thank you so much for the time to be able to talk to you about our mental health implementation at Rockingham County Schools. I would like to also just thank you for your commitment to mental health services for students and your interest in this area, because we certainly do have a great need in our schools for students to receive a full continuum of services that reaches each and every child. And so that leads me really just, I also want to thank the Exceptional Children's Division, and also the IAVS Division for their incredible leadership and their support of school districts during this time. We are very grateful for that, and, and also grateful for the Project Aware Director, Dr. Heidi Austin, and also the effort of all of those individuals to initially apply as a state department for the Project Aware grant. And so we were honored to be selected. Rockingham County Schools, our mission in our Behavioral Health Department is inspiring hope, making a difference every single one. And so what I would say is that, that, that mission really is carried out through that Behavioral Health Team and through our whole Instructional Support Services Department in Rockingham County. And through the Project Aware Funds, we've been able to engage in all of those Project Aware goals that Dr. Laura Hollahan just shared with you all. In Rockingham County, our infrastructure, because of Project Aware Funds, and building that infrastructure within a school district, we were able to really develop leadership to lead the work around behavioral health, social emotional support, crisis, and student safety. So that person happens to be me in the district, and so I'm honored to serve as the Project Aware Activate Director. And so also with me is my partner, Deidre Moyer, who is our data engagement specialist, and she also helps with the data evaluation and family engagement, which is so important to the world of mental health, as we think about supporting students and meeting their social emotional needs. In addition, that supports and practice really lead to five positions, three of those which were funded through Project Aware last school year. Because of the implementation in our work, we were able to submit a proposal to our local school board, who graciously allowed us to now hire six additional individuals who are a behavioral health specialist. So because our Board of Education really believed in this work and really felt like that, and understood the student needs, they were able to look at that proposal that we were able to develop, and really go forward and feel confident about providing more services so that we can sustain this work even beyond the grant. And so I'll be able to share with you what those services are and what they actually received, what led them to understanding the need for that proposal and approving that proposal. But as you can see, in a school district, that infrastructure to support the leadership for social, emotional, and behavioral health services is critical, along with actually having the data and the family engagement and the supports and practices that are in place. And I'm honored to introduce you Superintendent Dr. Rodney Shotwell, who's going to speak to you a little bit about this from a superintendent perspective. And I also want to greatly thank him. He has always been completely supportive of mental health services and, and providing the social emotional supports for our students. And so I want to thank him for, for his support and encouragement and leadership. And also our Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Cindy Corcoran, she also works with me hand in hand, and I want to thank her for her leadership as well. So I will turn it over to Dr. Shotwell, so he can share with you just a little bit about our financial infrastructure, and then we will get into our services.
Thank you, Stephanie. I want to thank the, Mr. Chairman and the rest of the board members for allowing us this opportunity, because this is really a, a very passionate place for our board, for the staff, because one of the things, for me personally, when we deregulated the mental health services in North Carolina, there were two groups of people who lost out the most with that deregulation, and that was substance abuse and services for children. And ever since that time, I mean, it's been well over 15 years, we have constantly been trying to fight back and bring back services for our young people, because they are absolutely calling out for help. And when we had a chance to apply for this grant, it was a no-brainer to say, yes, yes, please. And we have a wonderful staff to do this. And one of the things is that we co-mingled funds to try to make this work, but this would not have been able to take that giant step forward without having this Project Aware. That grant is absolutely the key reason that we're here today, being able to talk to you, because by being able to hire a director, a data evaluator, three behavioral specialists, being able to start off with that, and then we use some EC state funds to buy, to have two more specialists. And then because of the work that they've been able to do, and because of the needs that we have in our county, our local board, you know, it's, it's always nice to have a unanimous vote, and this is one of the things where we had a unanimous vote. We've added six more behavioral health specialists, because one of the things that we found out, that when we're talking to our schools, and our counselors, and our social workers, and our dropout prevention folks... and our counselors and our social workers and our dropout prevention folks, we're trying to balance the work of their job along with the mental health services of those children. And when we have a situation where we have to do a threat assessment or a risk assessment, it's taking time away from other kids, because there's only one person there. They can't do everything. And so we've been able to kind of really make a case for a comprehensive approach to behavioral health services. And by adding those six behavioral health specialists, it is really freeing up our counselors and our social workers to be able to do the work that they're more specialized in, but yet it's a communication that's going back and forth between the two. And I just really have to say that that is the thing that's really making this work. One of the things that you have to make a commitment, though, you have to make a commitment that this is going to be a financial priority each and every year, because you don't want to build a structure like this and children become dependent upon it, and then you take it away from them. And to me, one of the things, yes, we are using local funds this year to do this. But one of the things that we're doing is we're also being very active in looking at our budgetary outlook for the next three to five years for the district, and being able to take that into account and look at other possible fund sources, so that if we do have changes in our local funding or our state funding, that it's not going to be the end of the program. Or when this grant's over within five years, we don't want this program to end. It was designed for it to be a diving board, and that's what we're trying to do.
Thank you so much, Dr. Shotwell. And I just appreciate his vision and leadership for our district too, and his support of this very needed work in our district to support our students. And one of the things that we have found critical in Rockingham County Schools is the understanding of what really school safety is. Certainly, safe learning facilities are important and good crisis management protocols. But at the foundation of that is really good prevention practices, resilience practices, and good social emotional supports. That is a huge area of school safety that really is needed within each school district. And that has been something that has truly been a foundation for us as we think about this work. So this next slide, what I want, what this really incorporates, we call this in our school district, in Rockingham County Schools, our Lighthouse of Hope. And it really is sort of our behavioral health framework. And so if you look at that bottom of that Lighthouse of Hope, you see that at the foundation of that is good social emotional learning, being able to implement social emotional curriculum, also alignment with the CASA core competencies. In addition to that, being able to provide mental health first aid, help staff understand student needs and mental health services. But then also, teen mental health first aid. That's something new that we will implement this year, where we'll actually be able to engage directly with the students and also teach them about their own needs and how to recognize their own needs and get connected to services even sooner. We also have been engaging in trauma-formed care and resilience practices. And then also CRIM skills, which is the Community Resiliency Model, which is a set of wellness skills that help individuals manage and monitor stress. So that not only helps the students, but it also helps the staff. And so we want that social emotional support to go to all, all of each and every one of our students and also our staff as well. Also with that, we are engaging in, oh, if you could just stay there for, yes, thank you so much. But also, looking at the screening for social emotional skills is extremely important. So each and every one of our schools, we piloted screening for social emotional needs last school year within our district through our Project Aware Funds. This year, we are having each and every one of our schools actually engage in the social emotional screening. And we're doing that here just shortly, so that we can even get students connected even quicker to those services and become more preventative before students are in crisis. And then as you move up that Lighthouse of Hope, you'll see that as the students' needs increase, so do the services. So everyone gets that area in that green, in that core universal area. But that second area, those supplemental services, really are students who need de-escalation skills, practices, social skills, counseling groups. All of that is provided at that secondary level, at that supplemental. And then if you continue to go up and look at more intensive services, we're providing cognitive behavioral therapy for our students, providing individualized counseling based on those needs. And then the other area that we'll be able to elaborate some here in just a few minutes is on our case management piece, which is our Behavioral Health District Integrated Response Teams. Each of our 22 schools in Rockingham County has a behavioral health team that we trained through our Project Aware Grant. And so that team, the purpose of it, is to provide individualized services and to really monitor each student's need and provide any of that individualized attention that's needed. Also, at that individualized level, is focused crisis response, which we were able to really, we were so thankful for the structures and things that we had in place during COVID-19, as we were able to really rapidly pull together and support students in a remote way, when we had to do that all of a sudden in March. And so in addition to that, because we were able then to expand our funds this year and expand that whole Behavioral Health Department, we were able to create our Beta Team, which we'll also talk more about. That specific team helps complete individualized suicide and threat assessments that might be needed. On top of that is our specialized services, which includes our day treatment program for mental health services. And so students who need even more intensive supports than what we just named would also receive those day treatment services, where we combine education and mental health all throughout the day. And so we're really proud of that program and all of the individuals who support that program and that connection that it has to our Project Aware Grant. In addition to that, we also have therapeutic learning classrooms, where for students who need more social emotional support all throughout the day, they can also access one of our therapeutic learning classrooms. And we have several of those placed across our district as well, at the elementary, middle, and high school level. And then out of that Lighthouse of Hope, you see two beams coming out, and those are really our partnerships. We have a mental health advisory that has our community engagement stakeholders, who, and we have our local MCO representative who serves on that team, as well as many mental health partnerships, all the way from preschool, all the way up to school age, to adults. You know, all types of different individuals serve on that particular mental health advisory, who also have input into this work. And then our other partnerships, where we do have formalized memorandums of understandings with certain mental health partners who also support, who support our students. And we work hand-to-hand, and through that Behavioral Health Problem Solving Team that I spoke about, we work and connect students with more intensive services with our mental health partners when that is needed. And this really is the vision for preschool head start all the way through 12th grade in our school district in Rockingham County Schools. So the next slide that you'll see is really the areas that we are working on for social emotional learning. We want each and every one of our students to receive support in developing self-awareness, responsible decision-making, self-management, social awareness, and relationship skills. And this was also part of, when we thought about entry planning after COVID-19, we absolutely focused on these areas as well, as we thought about re-entering our students back into the school system and back into school in a more traditional manner. But also, even before that, thinking about how we can connect them back to their schools and connect them during this time when they're in remote learning. And so then also, if you can look at the next slide, what you will see is really just, this is, this is one of the things that, this infrastructure that I'm getting ready to talk about was completely essential during COVID-19. It has been essential even before that, but it became even more essential. And this was our Behavioral Health District Integrated Response Teams that we had at each of our schools. We're a medium-sized school district with 22 schools. And each of those schools have a behavioral health specialist through Project Aware. And then our school nurse, our school social worker, our school psychologist, and our school counselor administrator all regularly meet. And the interesting piece of this, if you look at across our state, most of these professions, with the exception of school counselor, they share schools, right? They travel between different schools. And so oftentimes, those, that team, what we call CISP individuals, specialized instructional support personnel, would often miss each other going in between schools, and that care wasn't as competitive. But because of this structure, the Behavioral Health District Integrated Response Teams, this really solidifies that team meeting together and providing individualized needs to our students and making sure that those wraparound behavioral health and social emotional services were happening for our students and are happening for our students. The other piece of this is the connection to our families as well, to make sure that families have resources and supports to support their children. And then all of this group would meet regularly and provide professional development through our Behavioral Health PLCs, the professional learning communities, and so that we can improve not only just our evidence-based practices for behavioral health and social emotional skills, but also that collaboration and that connection between these individuals, which only ensures stronger services for our students. And it helps us build capacity to provide even more services for our students. The other area that we are able to implement because of that expansion, as Dr. Shotwell said, Project Aware Funds absolutely laid the ground for us to be able to implement this infrastructure in our district. And we knew that we wanted to be able to sustain this work continuing forward. And so with that, we made a proposal that we submitted to our local school board, who, as I said graciously, approved, and we were so thankful that they did so. So out of that, those additional, additional six behavioral health specialists are paid out by local funds. And with that, we were able to develop this behavioral and emotional therapeutic intervention assistant team, which we're calling our Beta Team. And with that, our specialized instructional support personnel are able to serve on a rotation basis and actually respond in crisis. What was happening before is we had such an over, but prior to our implementation for Project Aware, we were living, as most districts, in a reactionary mode, which means we were linked next crisis to crisis as we were serving our students, because we had an overwhelming need for crisis supports. We had increasing suicide and threat assessments. And living in a rural area, our students had a hard time connecting to those services outside of the school district. And so we knew that we wanted to move to a prevention mindset. This Beta Team is allowing us to be able to do that, because our behavioral health specialists, along with our other instructional support staff, are able to serve on a rotation basis, which means all of those other school-based professionals, school psychologists, school counselors, school social worker, and school nurse, are able to actually fulfill the intent of their roles as well and provide all of those preventative services, while still at the same time offering stellar crisis response services as well. So that's just completely important as we think about providing supports for our kids. And also the connection to families as well. We literally help the families. If a child is in crisis and we have to go to an emergency with a student, if they're, if it does require them to go to a hospital, we actually go with them and help support them through that process. That takes an incredible amount of time. Going to the hospital in that way is really a traumatic event for a family. We only recommend that in absolute extreme cases. But when it does happen, sending them by themselves, it just doesn't seem right, because it's quite a process to navigate. So through this support and this assistance, we're able to provide them at that most critical and intensive time. And those relationships we have with our families prior to that, because of our Project Aware implementation, our Behavioral Health Teams have been implementing in each of our schools, we have such a good relationship with our families that we're able to support them, and they allow us to support them through that incredibly tough time for their family. So as you go to the next slide, you can really see, when we, before, prior, before Project Aware implementation, to, right before COVID, all right? We were sort of using the SHAPE system, which is the School Health Assessment and Performance Evaluation System. It helps us to really monitor our progress with our behavioral health and social emotional implementation. And as we look at that, you know, we really see that we have made a lot of growth in that, just that length of time. And those Project Aware Funds and this infrastructure has allowed us to be able to do that. And the increase in support for our kids has been amazing. So when you, when you go to the next one, so what are some, what are some of those numbers, right?
In 2019, we did have, as you know, that implementation really was significant during that particular school year. So I will, I will, I will tell you, through moving forward, because of this infrastructure we'll be able to have, this number will reduce. But you can see that we had 515 suicide and threat assessments in Rockingham County Schools in the 1920 school year. So we know that our kids have this overwhelming need and support. We were able to, through Project Aware implementation, we had 8,736 mental health and intervention support sessions with our students to provide them direct services through this model and through this transformational work. And then also, during COVID-19, when March came and we all went in and we were shut down, the school buildings were closed, but our behavioral health services never stopped. We had a behavioral health helpline that our families were able to access. We also had our Behavioral Health District Integrated Response Teams constantly checking in and meeting with our families, getting them connected with food supports, emotional supports, counseling through telehealth services. And that happened, and that was over 23 contacts, just for mental health and social emotional support. That's not even to mention just the basic needs that we were working on helping meet too. And that all happened through that infrastructure of that Behavioral Health Problem Solving Team. I was so grateful, as a leader in our district, that we had that infrastructure, because had that not been in place, that would have been even harder for us to meet the needs of our students, and it would not have been coordinated. So that infrastructure and that team approach that we had was critical to the support of our students. And so the other thing I would just say is, as I want to share with you, while I've shared with you some data, that is important, but I also want to share with you this single story that just tells you what the, what these services were able to do. I'm changing the name of the student to protect confidentiality. But she's a student at one of our high schools, and we're going to go with that her name is Sophie, okay? Sophie was, at the beginning of the year, thoughts of hurting herself. She was, she was a high-risk when we completed that suicide assessment, and that Behavioral Health Team worked together to be able to complete that multidisciplinary suicide assessment, which is extremely important for school-based professionals to be able to do. School-based professional, mental health professionals know our students. We know them. We care about them. We know them in and out. We know their families, and we've known them for years. So that's so important to have these school-based types of services and to have those professionals be able, for us to be able to connect with our kids in that way. And they naturally reach out to us, as Sophie did. So when Sophie, when she was rated as high-risk on that suicide assessment, Sophie, it's important for you to know, I'm sure you've heard of adverse childhood experiences. She rated probably about a seven on that ACES scale. She's been through incredible trauma in her life and social, and also she had been abused and was in the foster care system in and out. She had been adopted by a family, but by the time she was adopted by that family, that social emotional connection with a family that you would normally experience early on was really difficult for Sophie, as you could imagine, from what she had been through. Our Behavioral Health Team at this particular high school was able to provide wraparound supports through our Project Aware Grant. We were able to give cognitive behavioral therapy services. She was able to get basic needs met. She needed things like a dentist appointment, a medical appointment, just being able to access basic types of needs on that Maslow hierarchy of needs. She also needed more intensive services for medication management. We were able to get her connected with the right individual and the right supports. Oftentimes, there are misdiagnoses if families kind of go seek that out on their own. But through this whole process, in the middle of it, then COVID happened. Well, during that situation, our Behavioral Health Team continued telehealth services and connections with Sophie. And she did go back into crisis some during that COVID-19, but immediately knew exactly who to reach out, and because they were still who to reach out, and because they were still connecting with her over that time, they were able to quickly get her services, even on the weekends. And they were able to intervene at that moment, and then they were able to provide those services and get her more to a period of stabilization. And I'm happy to say, we are still offering those services for her, but Sophie is on a graduation path, and by the end of this year, she will graduate with college credits on top of that. And she has, she's on the Future Ready Core track. She has made amazing progress because even during this crisis, she is still on graduation track to get college credits. And I think that is amazing, and it speaks to what this infrastructure really does. So when you think about school safety, when you think about meeting the social emotional needs of our students and behavioral health needs of our students, it really is this amazing balance of physical and psychological safety. And what we've been able to do through this implementation and the supports that we've been able to provide really do bring that for students. Those basic needs are met, and those social emotional and behavioral health needs are met through this infrastructure and through this process, through our implementation. And so I'm honored to be able to share Sophie's story with you and also all of our 22 teams and the amazing work that they do. Want to give a huge shout out to all of my colleagues in Rockingham County and thank them for the amazing work that they are able to do because of this. And so, so thank you for letting me speak with you today. And I know there were a few other slides, I think, that my wonderful colleagues at DPI were going over as well. And that's my contact information, if you'd like to email me or contact me.
Fantastic. Thank you, Doctors Shotwell and Ellis from Rockingham County School. I am Heidi Austin, I am the Project Aware Director at DPI, and I'm going to cover our last few slides of the presentation this afternoon. Do you want to move? Thank you. So as Dr. Ellis referenced, Aware staff at DPI includes, in addition to the local Project Aware Directors and our Project Aware Evidator Coaching Coordinator. Aware also funds service providers doing the work, as Dr. Ellis just described, across all of our pilot sites. There is a correction to this slide, I would like to note. The Cleveland County Schools number should actually be 2.7 FTE. Cleveland has two mental health clinicians that are 100% aware-funded, they have one that is 50% aware-funded, and then they have one that is 20% funded to cover the summer months. So again, the Cleveland County Schools number there should be 2.7 FTE. Do you want to move to the next slide? We are required to report on specific indicators in the area of infrastructure, prevention, and mental health promotion as required by our. This is reported into SAMSA's Performance Accountability and Reporting System, also known as FARs. And the first three indicators on this slide, policy, workforce, and partnership, infrastructure output, for which data was reported for all seven quarters to date. So that data is reflective of October 2018 through June 30th of 2020. And so you'll see that there are FARs targets there, those are reflective of two years, and then you'll see our totals to date there. So for policy development, our target for year one and year two were 22, we're currently exceeding that at 27. So some examples of recent things that would be classified under policy development were a lot of the COVID-19 Protocol and Response Plan. Workforce development there, you can see that we are exceeding our FARs target. Those are trainings that really address supplemental or intensive supports for mental health professionals. In terms of partnerships and collaborations, we are also currently exceeding our FARs target. An interesting new partnership and collaboration for one of our pilot sites, Beaufort, our pilot site in Beaufort, is partnering with East Carolina University on another SAMSA grant called Project Don't Wait. Project Don't Wait is specifically working with three counties to develop school, community, university partnerships, providing mental health support, mental health clinicians in schools, and workforce development training in the community as it relates to natural disaster, mental health preparation, and response in rural community. One of the mental health prevention and promotion output training was also reportable for all seven quarters. Under training, mental health training for students and families would fall under that. You heard Dr. Ellis talk about teen mental health first aid. All of our Project Aware pilot sites are teen mental health first aid implementing sites. And then our last three mental health prevention and promotion outputs you see there, screening, referral, and assessment, those indicators were only required to be reported starting in year two of the grant. So those are three quarters of data reflected from October 2019 to June 30th, 2020. And as you know, COVID began impacting us midway through year two of our current grant cycle. So the only indicator there that we are not on track with is screening. The progress on that was certainly impacted by COVID-19. A lot of our pilot sites had planned to conduct some screening at the ends of the year, and that got postponed due to COVID. So information from SAMSA is that we will certainly not be penalized for not meeting the projected target, given the extenuating pandemic circumstances. And so our year two, quarter four, which is July, August, and September, that data will be entered into FARs by the end of next month, by October 31st. Do you want to move to the next slide? State-level oversight and support, there are a lot of SAMSA grant mechanics. We just looked at FARs data, which again, we report on quarterly. You heard Dr. Hollihan refer earlier to a continuation application. There is also an annual programmatic report that we submit. We report on data and progress for performance measures regarding our goals and evaluation activities. We provide an update on our key program accomplishments to date. And then we describe any difficulties or problems encountered in achieving our planned goals and objectives. Again, the continue application has to be submitted before SAMSA can award funds for the next budget year. Then there are various tasks that are done in a platform called ERA Commons, which is an online interface where we access and share administrative information related to the grant. And the ERA Commons interface is used throughout the lifecycle of the grant, from initial application submitting to grant closeout. We do have monthly Project Aware meetings, where our state-level staff, our pilot site staff, our SAMSA project officer, and also our On-Lar evaluation team touch base monthly. Interface with several divisions within the Department of Health and Human Services, specifically within Division of Mental Health, the Community Mental Health Section, and the Community Engagement and Empowerment Team. And then with the Division of Public Health, we've specifically been interfacing with their Behavioral Health Clinical Consultants and their Adolescent Health Coordinator, who is housed within the School Health Unit of the Children and Youth Branch of the Division of Public Health. And we've been able to partner with them specifically around youth engagement. So a little bit about promotion of North Carolina Project Aware. Dr. Hopkins referred to this at the beginning of the presentation, but you will see an example hyperlink at the bottom of this slide. HERSA, the Health Resources Service Administration, operates a national clearinghouse on rural health issues known as the Rural Health Information Hub. And so Project Aware is featured on the Rural Health Models and Innovation Section of the Rural Health Information Hub. And this is a process by where you apply to be selected and featured on this website. And they also give you some really great data about how many different states and either other countries that have viewed your profile on that website. We are currently working to build the evidence base to move Project Aware along the best practices continuum. There's also a hyperlink here at the bottom of the slide. We do have a profile that is featured on what is known as AMSHIP, the Association of Maternal and Child Health Programs Innovation Station. We are a cutting-edge practice. Innovation Station is just a searchable database of best practices in maternal and child health. So with that designation as a cutting-edge practice, we have shown that we are an innovative solution to an evolving public health issue, that we align with evidence inside of public health, that we do have perceived benefits to the child health population, we have early signs of success, and we do have a commitment to ongoing evaluation. So AMSHIP is going to be offering a technical assistance cohort this fall to all of the cutting-edge practices to help us advance on that best practices continuum. So we're certainly looking forward to resubmitting in the future to advance on that best practices continuum, once we have multiple years of implementation and outcome data. We're also working on validation of appropriate and accurate implementation of evidence-based practices. So On-Lar, again, was selected to provide evaluation services for North Carolina Project Aware, Project Activate. Our evaluation is being led by Dr. Gary Harmon, who is their Senior Project Director, Special Education Content and Data Expert. And an earlier slide again highlighted the four key project goals. There are a series of implementation and outcome metrics associated with each goal, but again, these outcome measures require multiple years of implementation. Did we move on? I believe we have one last slide. Just wanted to recap the fiscal overview. We do receive slightly over 1.7 million a year in SAMSA funding for Project Aware. You'll see here a detailed breakdown by budget category is depicted on this slide, and those percent categories are governed by SAMSA. So the majority of the funds, 75% of the funds, do go to the pilot site. We do keep a small percent at the state level. We have calculated an average cost student. We did that by determining the combined student enrollment of our Project Aware pilot site by the budget there. So we have a per student cost of $46. And I believe our last slide is just our Q and A slide.
So I just want to share gratitude to our state-level folks, to our district folks in Rockingham, to the State Board for graining us this opportunity. We're happy to respond to any questions at this point.
This is Olivia Oxendine, I have a quick question.
Hello.
Okay. This is a terrific presentation, and it's very, it's just, I mean, I'm just amazed at all that goes on to address the whole child is really what this presentation is about. My question is, the, the way in which this is operationalized on any typical day, Monday through Friday, a child, a student who needs services, how is that time apportioned between the therapy, the service side, and the instructional day?
Sure. Dr. Oxendine, I can speak to that, and thank you for asking that question. We definitely want to protect instructional time for students. And so it kind of depends on the student's needs as to how much that occurs during the school day. So let me start with, if there's an intensive need, a crisis situation, then we're going to go immediately to that student and connect them to supports, because likely they are not engaging in that instruction because of that crisis, that they might be on the way to be thought supporting themselves or whatever that crisis is. And so we would provide them those immediate supports. And then as we are able to provide the supports and we are able to pull back and provide more traditional types of services like counseling, we always try to work with looking at schedules. If it's at the elementary level, we often talk with the teacher individually, and we're constantly consulting with teachers as well. And we would pick a mutually agreed upon time of when we'd be able to, you know, support that student. But then that's if, that's individualized services. At the middle school level, it would be much the same way, and at the high school level, we would consult with those teachers and look at that. That's for individualized supports at a more intensive need. If we're looking at the supports that we provide to every student, core services that all students get, no matter what, for social, emotional, and behavioral health, we work with master schedules at each of the individual schools, and we work to implement those social, emotional skills and embed them in the curriculum. So we do our best to make those connections, and as naturally as they're going over subjects, such as history or science, whatever it might be that they are hitting on, those social emotional skills are embedded in that curriculum, and we do professional development around that for our teachers. And we are ever making progress in that area. And so if they need more supports as a social skills group, then we would absolutely look at student schedules, as that would involve a group of students, and then we would try to optimally pick a time throughout the day that would be a regular timeframe, and then provide those services that way. The Behavioral Health Teams meet usually after school, so the whole purpose of those teams is to really be able to have that time to talk with the administration and pull in any teaching, anyone. And all of that is aligned with multi-tiered systems of support. And so we have that connection with our special coaches and our teachers and our administration to make sure that we're providing that at optimal times.
We're getting close on time, so any more questions? Need to wrap it up?
I could make one comment, Mr. Keenan. I just want to say thank you to Dr. Ellis and Dr. Shotwell for the presentation. In our area of the state, Rockingham County is known for providing excellent services in this area. And we also saw an example of that when we had the presentation from Cleveland County. And my wish, as we listen to this presentation, is that all our school systems can begin to emulate this level of care for our students, which truly goes to the whole child that we all aspire to. But thank you to Rockingham County.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chair, that concludes the presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Keenan. And this concludes today's updates and committee reports. We'll have the remaining committee reports during tomorrow's meeting. I want to thank my colleagues, advisors, DPI staff, and others who contributed to today's meeting. I now ask for a motion to go into closed session and note for the audience and online listeners that following closed session, the September 2nd, 2020 meeting will adjourn immediately. Vice Chair Duncan?
A move that we go into closed session to consult with our attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, and to consider and give instructions concerning a potential or actual claim in the actions entitled Oak County Board of Education at AL versus State of North Carolina, JT individually and on behalf of DT ET at AL versus Bill de Blasio at AL.
Motion by Mr. Duncan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. White, Dr. Townsend Smith?
Yes, sir. Mr. Buckston?
Yes.
Dr. Oxendine?
Yes.
Ms. Keenitt?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Dr. Tipton Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Chastain?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Vice Chair Duncan?
Yes.
Chair Davis?
Yes. Motion carries, let's move into closed session at 3:50. So we'll take a 10-minute break, and at 3:50, we'll be in closed session. And I believe our instructions are everyone except board members and our general counsel and those needed in clothes should drop from the line.
Yes, sir.
3:50. All right. 3:50.